I have a call to order. Welcome to the regular council meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. It is 3:00 PM. We will have the invocation by Councilmember Jeffrey Darby and pledge allegiance by Councilmember Jeffrey.
That's right. Holy Father, we thank you for this day that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Father, for rest on last night. We thank you for those who are here. We pray for them. We pray for their family. We pray, Father, for this city. We ask that you would give us direction to serve the citizen. Lord, we ask that you bless those who are hurting and those who are becoming well as they recover from sicknesses. Father, we thank you for all things that you're going to do. In the name of Christ, I pray. Amen.
He's joining the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
All present, council in accordance with Louisiana open meetings laws and the adopted Bossier City Council meeting rules resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their names and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the president pro tem barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No questions shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant-at-arms and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right, we'll now have ceremonial matters and recognition of special guests.
Think he's going out of board?
Huh?
Do what?
No.
Are you going to do the proclamation?
Yeah, I want to introduce the new managers to the Brookshire Grocery Arena first.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, would y'all like to stand up? These are our new guys for Brookshire Grocery Arena. All right, you got Wayne Hodges and Jason Berry and Mr. Fortenberry down here too. But these are the new people that are going to be running the Brookshire Grocery Arena. So I want to thank y'all and welcome y'all to Bossier City.
Thank you very much.
So now, I'd like to read a proclamation to some family members of mine and their dear friends of Mr. Montgomery's here too. So would y'all like to come up? I'd like to present to y'all a proclamation. And this one is really special to me because this is my sister-in-law and my favorite, yes, and my brother.
And my favorite.
I'd like to read to y'all a proclamation.
All right.
Whereas Party Central began in 1996 as a rental company based from the home of Bernadette and Bubba Chandler. In 2000, they opened their doors at 4401 Viking Drive in Bossier City, Louisiana. And whereas over the years, Party Central has been one of the top places for the community to enjoy family-friendly fun. They have hosted countless birthday parties, family days, date nights, team celebrations, and special events for churches, organizations, and businesses. And whereas making memories is a hard work, but the Chancellors and their outstanding team made it easy for so many people. Oh my, what are we going to do without no go-karts and batting cages and mini golf and bounce houses and carnival food? Carny. Whereas May 26, 2024 will always be a bittersweet day for our community. On this day, the doors were closed for the final time on the 24-year party on Viking Drive. But on the other hand, a well-deserved retirement for two outstanding business owners, Bernadette and Bubba. Thank you for giving us a safe place to laugh, let our hair down, and connect with those most important to us. Bossier City is better because of you. Now, therefore, I, Thomas H. Chandler, mayor of the great city of Bossier City, do hereby proclaim May 26 as Party Central Day.
Wow.
There is also something I wanted to give y'all too because now, huh?
Give it to Bernie.
Okay, I was going to give it to Bernie. Now, she's from the Gates family. That's, you know, Bossier sign. So they've been here how many years?
Sixty, eighty-five.
Sixty-five, sixty years. And our family business has been here for about that same length. And Bubba and Bernadette just came on. But I want to give you a key to the city, Bernadette.
Oh, wow. Tommy, did it work your door to your office?
No, no, it goes to every door, but not all, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Tommy. Well, thank you.
One thing I want to say, this is the first time I've seen Bubba smile in a long time. Congratulations. I like that.
Yeah.
Be careful.
All right, councilmen, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2024, regular council meeting. A dispens for the reading.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Darby. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Mr. Free, we need to approve the agenda as well.
All right, council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Hammond.
Second by Councilman Williams.
Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote. All right, unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to enter into the attached amended local services agreement with the parish of Bossier and to execute any documents and furtherance thereof. Final reading.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Darby. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to eliminate an equipment operator one position in the streets and drainage department for public works and to amend the general fund and public services and sanitation fund budgets to transfer funds from the streets and drainage department to the streets and grass-cutting department for salaries and benefits. Final reading.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams, Darby, Hammond. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached joint cooperative endeavor agreement with the city of Shreveport and the Caddo Bossier Parish's Port Commission. Final reading.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Hammond. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote. New business.
Adopt an ordinance approving a conditional use approval for the retail sale of high and low content alcohol for on-premise consumption and to modify and extend the hours of operation to 2:00 AM at a proposed pool hall slash bar, pool hub located at 2790 Shed Road, Suite E., Bossier City, Louisiana. First and final reading and favorable by MPC.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating $175,000 to come from the jail and municipal buildings fund to make repairs and security upgrades to the Bossier City Municipal Complex. First reading.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance amending and reenacting a portion of Chapter 6, Section 10 of the Code of Ordinances relative to alcoholic beverages to allow the sale of packaged beverages of high and low content alcohol content and packaged wine for consumption off the premises on Sunday during designated hours and otherwise providing with respect thereto. First reading.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Montgomery. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yes, sir. President, on this thing, can the bars open on Sunday? Have you passed this?
No.
No, this is just off-premise purchase of high content alcohol. Off-premise meaning you go like liquor stores, grocery stores, retail establishments that already sell it but are prohibited from selling it on Sundays. This doesn't change anything about the time that can be opened for bars.
Any additional questions, councilman?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to speak for just a second since I'm the one that proposed this ordinance. This ordinance is, you know, it's in front of us today on strictly a financial ordinance that there are so many tax dollars out there that we are not collecting. And all of us sitting up here knows it takes tax dollars in order to keep this city running and keep expanding and giving the citizens of Bossier the outstanding police, fire protection, and everything else that we offer here in Bossier City. We're leveling the playing field that we have so many tax dollars that has been brought to our attention that are going over the bridge and being spent in other municipalities where we could be collecting those tax dollars right here in Bossier City. So that is the reason for this ordinance. It's not so we recommend people going out and buying more alcohol or anything like that. It's all a part of a fiscal responsibility that we have here to try to make as many tax dollars as we can to keep this city running.
Additional comments from the council? All right, please cast your vote.
Mr. Hammond, did you?
It didn't pop up. I'm a yay.
Did it pop up that time?
There we are.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an accountant one due to a promotion in the finance department. First and final reading.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Darby and second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Oh, I missed. Oh, excuse me.
You're for that?
I'm a yay.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a foreman for the sewer maintenance division and public utilities. First and final reading.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Darby. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support of $1,400,000 of contingent local match funding for the Bossier Parish School Board's Defense Community Infrastructure Program Leadership Readiness Training Complex Project. First and final reading.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience?
No prayers to God today. Listen, I have some general questions about.
Amen, please.
Thank you. But anyway, I would.
Amen, please.
Sir, thank you. David Crockett, 653 Duane Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana. I've done that a few times. The question on this is, it would be nice to have an explanation where it originated from. If it was, if it's in joint support with the Defense Department, I would question why both the parish and the city would need to contribute it to something that's supporting the Defense Department. Here we are with the, we have the Speaker of the House in Bossier City. Typically, those kind of things bring revenues over time and it seems like that that would have been a great source of money for this where the city wouldn't have to pay for it. So I'm kind of rhetorically asking the council where it originated from. Was it requested from DOD? You know, why is the city needing to pay for something that is going to the benefit of the military? Usually, the benefit comes to the city from the DOD doing something like this. And then the other question I would have is how is the city going to be able to use it or is the city going to be able to use it? I think I've read something recently about this, but I'm not sure that it's real clear, especially with what's published today. I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to address it while I'm here, but that, those are my questions.
I will. Yes, the city will be able to use this. The, in retrospect, what they will be able to use this for, I don't think it's really something that our police and fire will be doing some stuff out there, but it's not really something that we would want to make, knowing the training that they will be doing out there along with other, some other government entities. I know this is very well supported by the four-star general that we do have on premise here now at Barstow Air Force Base. This will be kind of working in tail with Bipstal, training the ROTC. I know Ms. Johnson is getting up here. They can probably speak a whole lot more to this than what I can. This is just what I've been read in on. But at first, I had my, my questions that were answered on why we're doing this. But I do fully understand now why we are.
Also, Brian, I want to say, it came from, where's Colonel Crockett? Where'd he go?
Right here.
It came from Barstow, if I'm not mistaken. Correct?
Yes, and to an extent, my name is Lisa Johnson, One-on-One Cambridge Circle, also president of the Bossier Chamber of Commerce and have been working with the groups on this grant proposal. This grant proposal came from whenever we did our DC fly-in in the fall, the Bossier Chamber of Commerce, going up there and talking to our colleagues at the Pentagon and our congressional delegation and our lobbying firms that are up there representing Barstow Air Force Base. We learned at this time that there was a specific grant for community improvement grants and that would help to support Barstow Air Force Base and our military families. They encouraged us to look at something that we could do in the community for community improvements that would not only be good for the community but also for Barstow. It is called a Community Defense Involvement Program or Defense Community Involvement Program. It's either DCIP or CDIP, one of the two. And C?
DCIP.
DCIP, yes. Defense Community Involvement Program. And so it is a competitive grant and it requires matching dollars. So as much as we would like for Speaker Johnson to be able to assist us with it requiring matching dollars, it's why we have to have local support from this. And so there is local support and state support and could be as well some private support. We're just, the school system is at the grant application process. And when they, with your approval for this and they turn it in, then we hope to know by this fall if we win this grant. And then we'll have an ROTC, JROTC, training facility that will help with many, many other things that I'm not at liberty to talk about just yet that will help not only with retention of our military families but also secure our number one economic indicator, development indicator in Bossier City and Bossier Parish and make sure that we maintain and sustain those missions here with Barstow Air Force Base.
Ms. Johnson.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say that I had the documents in front of me. It requires a 30% match. It's a 70/30, 70% from DCIP and 30% has to be local funds in order for the grant to be effective, which is the way a lot of these federal programs are run. Even though the Department of Defense does have plenty of money, they expect a local, a local buy-in and appreciate all you do for it.
Yes, sir. Again, this is a grant. It's not a milcon. It's not an appropriation. It is a grant process.
We, in the past, to, for those that don't know, we actually did the same type of matching with the 220 interchange going into Barstow.
Absolutely.
So it is identical. Barstow reached out and we're always happy to help the largest employer, the largest economic engine in northwest Louisiana. So whatever we can do to help them solidify their position here in our country, we're behind them.
Thank you. I appreciate your vote of support and I appreciate the comments from the audience too, just for clarification. It is a competitive grant process. So we try to keep it on the down-low as much as we can so that another community doesn't go out for it. You know how it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions from the council?
Yeah, I have one. This is the only one that had not been answered for me. Miss Nottingham may be able to answer it. Has the police jury, have they approved their 1.4 million yet?
I can answer that, Councilman Hammond, if you don't mind. They, they have a letter of support that is attached in the packet as Exhibit B, but the way that we wrote the city's appropriation, and it was, it was important that we go ahead and get it in front of the council today because the grant package is due very soon. But what you're considering today would only appropriate and only obligate the city's 1.4 million if and only if and after the, the police jury votes in a meeting and has an ordinance to appropriate their 1.4 million. So it's a total of 1.4 million from the parish and 1.4 million from the city. But the 1.4 million from the city will only be appropriated after the police jury appropriates theirs. So the city money is contingent on theirs. They have not done it yet, but our money would not be appropriated until and unless they did theirs. And that's the way this resolution is written.
And the school board is putting up the rest of the money?
The school board has already bought the property and has put up several million dollars. The school board has a lot more money in it than, than even the amount of the 30% proposal. I think the Louisiana Economic Development LED has put up another large portion of the local part. I think the total of the local funds is 5.6 million. It's going to be a pretty impressive facility out there at the old, old, well.
Northwest State School.
Yeah, yeah. But, hey, look, Barstow asked for it. Like you said, if Barstow asked for something, I think this council and the city and this parish have always done what they need to do to step up and try to accommodate.
Additional questions? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of a tax account specialist due to a resignation and backfilling any vacant position this may create in the sales tax department. First and final reading.
Sumo, second.
First by Councilman Montgomery, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Elect a city council president to serve from July 1st, 2024 until June 30th, 2025.
I'll make a motion for Don Williams to be president.
All right, we have a motion for Councilman Williams made by Councilman Maggio and a second by Councilman Darby. Run the vote.
Discussion.
Really? Any questions from the, or comments from the audience? All right, any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Elect a city council vice president to serve from July 1st, 2024 until June 30th, 2025.
I'll make a motion for Chris Smith to be vice president.
Second.
All right, we have a motion for Councilman Smith to be vice president made by Councilman Maggio and a second by Councilman Williams. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? All right, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, announcements. Mayor?
Reports.
What if I want him to go first?
Okay.
Angela Williams, Finance Director, monthly financial.
Sorry.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor Chandler, you have before you the financials for the month ended May 31st, 2024. Page one is revenue by fund. The city's currently 16% over budget. The decrease in riverboat capital fund revenue is due to a decrease in gaming revenue compared to May 2023. The increase in water fund revenue is due to an increase in water sales to the base compared to May 2023. The decrease in sales tax fund revenue is due to a decrease in sales tax revenue compared to May 2023. Page two is expenses by fund. The city's currently 8% under budget. The majority of the increase in general fund expenditures is related to payroll. There were three payrolls in May 2024 and only two payrolls in May 2023. The decrease in EMS fund expenses is due to a decrease in ambulance alliance transfer to capital compared, combined with an increase in payroll related to the additional payroll in May 2024 compared to May 2023. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is down 5.4% compared to May 2023. Page four is the Manning report. There are five more full-time employees than last month and full-time employees are 52 under budget. There are two more part-time employees than last month and part-time employees are four under budget. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for May 2024 has increased significantly compared to prior year. Current year-to-date income has increased 3% from prior year and is 18% over budget. On a rolling 12-month basis, net operating income is up 2%. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ben?
Good afternoon, council. 4100 Perry Winkleane, Benton, Louisiana. I did not prepare a PowerPoint today. There hasn't been any significant change from my presentation a couple, couple of weeks ago. Some good news, three things. Y'all may or may not be aware, we received about 175,000 or exactly 175,000 from the state to do panel repairs for Benton Road. If you travel that, it's been beat up. We're working with JB James right now to identify those. But we recently got word that in this year's appropriation through House Bill 1 and 2, there's another $1.5 million specifically to put towards Benton Road. So we're, we're looking at around doctors So we're, we're looking at around Doctors Drive South fixing, um, truthfully, all the, the concrete panels that we have, both northbound and southbound, that have been beaten up, um, over the years there, so that's great news, um, that's, that's enough to do a real meaningful amount of work on that. We also received 245,000 dollars to add additional street lighting, uh, in the city and we're looking at several corridors for that and 50,000 for some miscellaneous panel repairs, um, looking to focus along, uh, Sunflower in that area, um, to allocate those funds.
Yeah, I think that was specifically for District 1, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure everybody near here with that 50,000 dollars.
And to be clear, District 1 has probably the majority of the concrete panels, uh, Jeff's district has probably the second most, so it's a good place to put it. Um, and you're gonna be seeing a lot more of that work, we're finishing up funding that we had appropriated in 2023, the city appropriated for panel replacements and Wade's, you know, gearing up to get 2024 moving as well, so all of that's great news. Councilman Montgomery, you had asked about the lane closure on Highway 80, we completed three, uh, long water service bores, there were larger bores on the main yesterday, and I am told that that, uh, lane closure will be removed by the end of the week.
Awesome.
Any other questions, Jim?
Yeah, Ben, one, one question, is there, all of the, um, panel replacements and everything, that is fantastic, which is gonna take place, is there any possible way that we can talk to them and they start finishing up some jobs and getting some lanes open before we start closing anything else on Benton Road until we get the new carriageway open?
Yes, sir.
And when, when do we think the carriageway is gonna open?
I'm pushing for the end of July, I don't know that we make that with, uh, some of the weather we've experienced over the last few weeks, um, but that's, that's what we're pushing for.
Okay.
What about the lane closure on Airline?
The lane closure on Airline.
Airline and Murphy, right there, the sewer main that?
I, I need to get, I don't, let me get some information on that, I'll get back with you, Councilman Smith, uh, we, we have observed, and, and I was, I was working on, uh, any, reading some information, we have observed what we believe to be some drainage issues that are DOTD-related, specifically on Murphy. And, um, we have, uh, communicated that, what that scope of work would be, we have Wicker Construction out there, said, hey, we, we believe y'all should, you know, strike while the iron's hot, take care of this, and they're, I'm not getting anywhere, I'm not surprised, but they, I'm being told they don't have the funding to fix that. So, um, with that being said, we're gonna have to come up with a interim plan to get that done, that's the only reason, um, it's not a sewer issue there, thank the Lord, it's a stormwater, um, problem, stormwater pipe, um, that's very shallow in that area, and that's not Bossier City's, that's DOTDs.
So the state does not have the money to fix their state highway problem?
That particular problem, that's what I'm being told, yes, sir.
Ben, how about Hamilton Road?
Hamilton Road, we're pushing, um, that's gonna be sometime after July, as y'all know, we've allocated some more funding to do more panels there, um, so we'll get what's a mess cleaned up and then we're gonna make another mess out there, but, um, that's coming along.
When, when they open up Hamilton Road, Ben, it, that will continue across these Texas and come out onto the new carriageway?
Yes, sir.
That street will not be closed off?
Correct.
On the, okay, because that's gonna be a main thoroughfare.
That'll be brand-new from kinda where you see the major construction, which is south of Highway 80, all of that'll be brand-new from there all the way to the carriageway.
Okay.
Lot of old stuff, some gremlins in the ground over there that we've been, uh, dealing with, that's what's kinda slowed that, that process down, but it's, I think we've, uh, I think we got the animal on the ropes. Thank y'all.
I just wanna thank Mr. Mr. Prey for being our president, I don't know if I can live up to expectations he puts out for me, I just don't think I can do it.
Not likely. Mayor, you have something you'd like to say?
Well, one last time, good afternoon, Mr. President, is it the last time for you, Mr. President?
Mm-hmm.
And council? Good to see y'all, y'all, you know, things are going well here in Bossier City, as most of, of us know, uh, and probably have already been there, that another, a business opened in Bossier City, the Aldi up in North Bossier, uh, on Meadow Creek, and there was a great big turnout the day it opened, and a lot of people, line went all the way back almost to Sam's. Uh, also last week, our local US Army recruiters came to City Hall and myself and employees of City Hall joined in celebrating the 249th birthday of the US Army and we thanked them for their service and everything they do for America. Tomorrow is June 19th and it is recognized as Juneteenth, I wanna take this opportunity to recognize Juneteenth and, and the significance of that day. I was invited over the weekend to join Stonewall Baptist Church and community as they came together to celebrate this date and all that it represents. I feel Juneteenth is a day that is important in the history of our nation, I told those that attended it in the celebration that I view Juneteenth not only as the end of slavery, but is the beginning of freedom. We're all thankful for the freedom that we enjoy in our nation and Juneteenth is another way that we can celebrate that freedom, so I just wanna recognize that at that time, so thank you for y'all's time, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, any additional announcements from the council? All right, meeting adjourned.